To get direction for this council and this mayor, we ask you to lead and direct them in everything that they do, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, alright. Councilman, a motion on the work session minutes for July the 18th?
Mr. President, move for approval.
Have most approve, all in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
A motion on the regular council meeting minutes for July 18th?
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Have most adopt, all in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, you're up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, we're gonna start with while, a lot of us are gonna try to get in and get on out because it's National Night Out and this year we have a total of, well first, good evening to all of our residents as well, um, thank you all for coming out, uh, especially on daylight National Night Out where we have thirty-eight neighborhood associations that are hosting events across the city, uh, twenty-four of those neighborhoods are hosting events with grants awarded by the Neighborhood Services Department. Uh, National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer and more caring places to live. National Night Out enhances the relationships between neighbors and law enforcement while bringing back a true sense of community. So for those who may be listening or watching online, it's probably not too late for you to engage, uh, your neighborhood right now and to be there when your council member or myself gets there to say hello and to thank you all for your engagement in all things related to Montgomery. Thank you for, uh, your involvement and we thank all of those neighborhood leaders and those that are participating for working with our police department and other public safety officials. Now, we'll get to, uh, back to school. We know that Montgomery Public Schools will, uh, go back on Thursday, August tenth, uh, seems like the summer has flown by, especially if you ask my kids, um, but for those of us as parents and guardians who are looking after them, it's probably been a little bit longer, um, than it seems to the school kids and the young people that are going to, uh, high school and are in high school right now. Uh, Montgomery Public Schools will be hosting a Back to School Bash this Thursday at Riverwalk Amphitheater, partners with CSX, um, we wanna thank them as well for, uh, their back to school contribution of fifty thousand dollars, a significant amount, uh, in gym equipment for McKee Middle School, uh, just a great, great partnership and we're thankful and grateful for CSX for that generous donation. Now we wanna touch on the Central Alabama Neighborhood Initiative Wellness Fest, uh, this will be happening, uh, Saturday, um, that should have a T in there, uh, but that's alright, uh, Saturday, August the twelfth, from four to seven on Dexter Avenue between Lawrence Street and the Court Square Fountain. There'll be free healthcare information will be available, including exercise information and demos, as well as COVID testing, yes, COVID testing, I've had a number of colleagues that have come down with, with COVID, uh, it is still active, uh, and so, uh, that will be tested there as well as other information that's health and wellness related from some of our community partners. So we wanna encourage the community to come out, uh, to this on, uh, Saturday, August the twelfth from four to seven PM on Dexter Avenue. Also, August is National Black Business Month and during Black Business Month, we wanna encourage residents and visitors alike to show their support for our black-owned businesses. Each August, the United States honors the success of black entrepreneurship with National Black Business Month Campaign. These businesses help sustain local economies across the nation, including Montgomery. Twenty-eight and a half percent of businesses in Montgomery are owned by African-Americans and we continue to try to look for ways to approve and partner, uh, with them as best we can and we encourage the support of those businesses and other small businesses, uh, throughout this year and just not when it's highlighted for a particular month. Certainly, we wanna move on to our Small Business Survey and as we mentioned, as part of our ongoing efforts to foster a vibrant and inclusive community, the City of Montgomery Secured a grant through the National League of Cities to conduct a Small Business Survey. The goal is to capture a comprehensive understanding of the opportunities small business owners have encountered, uh, resources available and the hardships they may face in running their businesses. Small business owners' valuable insight will play a pivotal role in shaping a formalized small business support program for the citizens of the City of Montgomery and Montgomery County as a whole. Participation in this survey is crucial in advancing our advocacy and programming efforts, enabling us to focus on the areas that matter most to you. What this does is it gives us feedback that we need, not only from our Department of Economic Development, but also for feedback we can give to the Chamber of Commerce and our state and federal partners as to what small businesses really need, uh, in our community. And as a former small business owner, uh, I can attest that these things are very helpful because quite often, when you're not a big business and you don't have a big brand, sometimes you feel a little overlooked and you don't feel like your voice is, is heard as much as some of the larger businesses. But we know that ninety-five percent of our economy is driven by small businesses and that's important, not only for Montgomery, that's important for the River Region and the state as a whole. So this survey will only take fifteen minutes to complete and we hope to have our responses by August the twenty-second. An email will be sent to small business owners with a city or county business license. So check your junk mail, check your spam mail, if you have a city or county business license, you should get one of these surveys. So we really wanna get as much feedback as we can so we'll know how to direct our advocacy, we'll know how to direct our actions and potentially, uh, most importantly, our policies to help drive small business growth. When you drive small business growth, you grow your economy overall. So we sincerely appreciate your time in advance, but we want you to fill out this survey, please, so we can have great feedback about how to move forward and how to better improve our overall economy and the overall business environment for all small businesses. Now, uh, we wanna talk about a job fair tomorrow that Congresswoman Terry Sewell will be hosting. This is the Congresswoman's Seventh Annual Job Fair tomorrow from ten AM to two PM. Uh, it will feature over eighty employers from ten industries to include automotive, banking, education, food management and hospitality, government agencies, healthcare, law enforcement, production, transportation and utilities. Um, so we wanna thank Congresswoman Sewell for this job fair and we certainly would like for people to come out. There are tremendous opportunities and openings right now in our region that are going unfilled. We wanna make sure that each and every way we can partner with, uh, our government leaders as well as those business leaders, that they provide information and opportunities for those who are seeking to improve their stance economically and professionally and this is one of the ways that that will be done. So we look forward to seeing, uh, members of our community there and it's not restricted to where you live, by congressional district, if you're looking for a job or you're looking for a better job, uh, unless you work for the city. Y'all didn't catch that, did you? Uh, unless you work for the city, um, you can go. No, whoever wants to improve their life, there are gonna be some great opportunities, uh, at this job fair, we wanna encourage those, uh, to register and to turn out. Finally, Mr. President, uh, and this will be my last topic, we wanna give an update on the sanitation, um, progress. The sanitation department is continuing to work seven days a week to ensure communities are up to par while also keeping safety of staff first priority during the extreme heat conditions. And what that means is we've had to make sure we're managing all of our folks who are on the back of the trucks who are working outside, uh, in this hundred-degree-plus heat and that has had an impact and has taken its toll on many in our public works department. So we're grateful for them, to their dedication, uh, to their hard work and we certainly, uh, appreciate the community and the residents understanding that. But nonetheless, uh, we have been working seven days a week, uh, to get caught up on trash and pick, uh, pickup and so what we're looking to do is to finish up from our recent storms. We feel like in the next, uh, few days, we will have this back to normal where we were and we look forward to a normal schedule very soon. So we understand feedback that the council has, has gotten, we understand the feedback that many, uh, along the routes have gotten as well. We're doing everything in our power to make sure, uh, that we pick up the trash and limbs and even some things that again, probably shouldn't be out there, but we're gonna pick those things up and then we'll get back to informing the community of what exactly can be put curbside, what shouldn't be put curbside and we'll continue to proactively plan for these type of things moving forward. So with that, Mr. President, that concludes, uh, my message and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anybody got a question, Mayor?
Mayor, I have a question. Uh, do we, are we, um, outsourcing any of that pickup or is it just all on our team?
No, we've been, oh, we've been, um, outsourcing some of that, uh, both privately as well as with other public works departments, more so on the weekend than during the week because they're running their own, um, pickups during the week.
Okay, good.
Good deal. Okay, anybody else? Okay, first item, let him start.
Mr. President, I have one hearing on proposed ordinance reserving one parcel of the land containing six point eleven acres located on the west side of Bell Road, four thousand feet south of Vaughn Road from the Edgewann District to an R fifty district.
This is a public hearing, I need, uh, if you wanna speak on this item, please come forward. I have Jesse Miles, Charles Bostick, Harold, Harold Hale, are you on this item also? Mr. Hale?
I'm Jesse.
Harold Hale? Yes, sir, are you speaking on this item?
Sir, we're speaking.
Are you talking on this particular item?
No, sir.
Okay.
Mine's next agenda.
Next item? Okay. Alright. Yes, sir, you're, you are?
Uh, I'm, uh, Chris Bostick with Pilgrims and Bostick Engineering, I represent the developer.
Okay.
Uh, if you can give me, uh, just a moment, I have a quick, uh, slideshow presentation. Uh, as you, uh, stated, we are trying to rezone the six point one-one acres on Bell Road from, uh, AGR one to R fifty, single family. Uh, the developer, Lori Collier, could not be here, she's on maternity leave, but I believe we have her on a phone line in case any questions are asked, uh, from her home. So when we get to that part, if there are any questions we need to ask her, I will, uh, address those to her. Uh, the biggest issue we have heard with this project has been that Bell Road has major, has had major congestions for years and with the expansion of, uh, the school and the new Chase Creek subdivision on Vaughn Road, the traffic will only get worse. So no one wants anything else built until the city can catch up with their infrastructure. The infrastructure is an absolutely valid complaint, but it is not a reason in and of itself to refuse my client the opportunity to develop. I hope to show you that the location of the development, the existing infrastructure in place now and the planned improvements, uh, will mean that our thirty-one lot subdivision will have little impact on Bell Road and should not be turned down for infrastructure. Uh, this is slide one. This slide shows Bell Road from the intersection of Vaughn Road to the north of Booker T. Washington Magnet School to the south. Uh, our site is not near any driveway or subdivision entrance, with the nearest being Norris Farms Road at zero point one-three miles to the north and a single-family residence driveway at zero point one-two miles to the south, so there is no traffic conflict for the turnout. Uh, our proposed entrance location is on a straight section of Bell Road that should allow an intersection site triangle with a departure site distance above the required four hundred and forty-five linear feet for the forty mile-per-hour speed limit in both directions with no other driveways or intersections within that decision area. So there is good visibility for safely exiting the site onto Bell Road with the, only the oncoming traffic and no competing driveways to monitor. If we can go to slide two. Uh, this slide shows the preliminary site plan for the subdivision with at most thirty-one R fifty lots. It is our preference to have a cul-de-sac rather than connect to Capuano Drive, but that decision will be made by the city when we formally submit plans. We propose a single entrance and anticipate the city requiring at minimum a deceleration lane for drivers taking a right turn into the site to exit the main travel lane and an acceleration lane for the drivers taking a right onto Bell Road from the site to accelerate into the flow of traffic. For drivers who are taking a left into the site, you will note that approximately seventy-five feet south of the proposed site entrance, the northbound lane of Bell Road expands to two lanes, if I can use my laser pointer here, right here's where I'm talking about. This means that while a left-turning car may have to come to a complete stop, the cars behind it can move to the right lane and safely pass the stopped car. Altogether, we anticipate that the intersection of Bell Road and our site entrance, Bell Road will have four lanes, will be four lanes wide, just like all the subdivision entrances to the north and we, and will be fully expanded to meet the city's future plans for Bell Road. If we can go to slide three. This slide shows a closer look at the site and adjacent area to the north. As mentioned before, the northbound lane of Bell Road expands to two lanes south of our proposed entrance. You can see on the southbound side that Lighthouse Christian Academy has an acceleration lane that ends north of our site, right up here. This is the end of one of several short four-lane sections of Bell Road that are about sixty-three feet wide. It is my understanding that the city traffic department is working towards expanding all of Bell Road to this width, which will allow a five-lane Bell Road south of Vaughn Road, just like it is to the north. Uh, next slide, please. Here's the intersection of Bell and Vaughn Road, where you can see that the north of Bell Road and the east and west of Vaughn Road, the five-lane configuration I referred to before, with two lanes traveling in either direction and one central turn lane. This is what I was told by the traffic department is the future of Bell Road to the south. Uh, slide five, please. This slide gives us a look at the zoning of the surrounding neighborhoods. As stated in the remarks section of your, uh, handout, there is AGR one, R seventy-five, PGH forty, so the R fifty zoning we are requesting is not out of character with the area. There are actually smaller lots right across the street. This is a small subdivision that has not been rezoned yet, so there are no covenants and will not be until the developer partners with the builder and has a plat to record. I understand that the surrounding communities have just spent a year working out arrangements with D.R. Horton for the four-hundred-lot Chase Creek subdivision on Vaughn Road, where the builder knew what they wanted to do and were able to answer most any question. I can tell you that the developer will not build houses smaller than fourteen hundred square feet and there will be a homeowners association. Apart from that, the exact details of what kind of houses will be built and if the lots will be available for custom home building have not yet been decided. I, I know that there will be lots of questions and lots of comments from the public, but the thing that I really wanted to point out here is, this is a development that is early in the process. We are not even zoned yet for R fifty, that is what we're trying to do now. We cannot say what the houses are gonna look like, the exact size of the houses, we don't have a footprint to show on everything because our developer is an independent developer and she is trying to get this approved so that she can find a builder to partner with and build this subdivision. Uh, I have tried to show that with the existing infrastructure on Bell Road heading north, that there is already a second turn lane, that a left turn, turning across Bell Road into our property is not going to stop traffic and that the decel lane and acceleration lane that the city will no doubt require us to put in will provide an exit for people who are turning right into the property to not stop the tr- flow of traffic. This is probably the best spot someone could have chosen to try to build with the current setup of Bell Road and not impact their neighbors. Uh, I know there will be plenty of questions and I'll stick around to answer and, uh, Ms. Collier is on the line in case I need to refer to the developer. Thank you.
Jesse, Jesse Miles?
Okay, I got, uh, my name is Jesse Miles, I live in Bell Station, I've been there my near forty years, so I saw the, the start of Bell Road and Vaughn, they had an intersection at Bell and Vaughn, four-way intersection, now of course it's a street light, so I don't need to speak on that particular section, but I've been there long enough to know what's going on here. So he keeps mentioning, I got something I wanna read here, it might take me three minutes, might take me three minutes to read, but he says, "The city plans on expanding Bell Road." Okay, alright, they plan on expanding in the future. When's the future? Next month? Next year? Uh, do we have the money to expand Bell Road to four lanes and a center lane? No, we don't have that money yet, I don't believe, otherwise it may have been done. I am not against housing, I am, hey, we need to build more housing for people, I'm not against this gentleman. Right now, we don't have the infrastructure, so my talk is gonna be on infrastructure and I'm mentioning it fifteen times in this little sheet I'm gonna read and it'll take me maybe two or three minutes to read it, so if you could bear with me, please. So, these are just a few reasons. There are several compelling reasons for not building new developments until the infrastructure is in place. One, substantial growth. Waiting for the necessary infrastructure to be in place ensures that the development can so, uh, support substantial growth. This includes adequate transportation, water supply, sewage systems and other utilities which are essential for the long-term health of the new community. We need new housing, I'm not against it, I said that twice now. Avoiding strain on existing infrastructure. Building new developments without proper infrastructure can place a significant burden on existing resources. Overloading roads and other utilities can lead to congestion, decreased service quality and potential system failures. Three, I got nine of them, three. Public safety. Infrastructure can, like roads and emergency services, play a crucial role in ensuring public safety. Without them, new developments can be at a higher risk for accidents, delay in emergency response and other safety concerns. Four, quality of life. Adequate infrastructure enhances the quality of life of residents. Access to parks, schools, the schools coming in, that housing development on Vaughn's coming in, this fall, the schools coming in, there's gonna be a lot of traffic. That, uh, car wash is coming in, there's, there's another one. They're gonna build another supposedly Lion's Pride Chevron service station on Vaughn, it's not on Bell, but it's right next to Vaughn, where they're gonna build that service station. Uh, five, economic efficiency. Building infrastructure after the development is completed can be substantially more expensive and disruptive. Planning and constructing infrastructure along the development process can be more costly, cost-effective and efficient in the long run. Four, I mentioned number six, he mentioned the road is sixty-foot wide and most of Bell Road is not four-lane and it's not three-lane, I don't know where he got that, I know he put out some fancy charts up there, most of Bell Road is two-lane and there's a lot of wrecks on Bell Road, I've seen them, cause I've lived there, like I said, my near forty years. Seven, proper value. Well-planned developments without proper infrastructure can lead to higher property values over time. Buyers and investors are likely to be more attracted to communities with good infrastructure amenities. Eight, I got one, two more. Community engagement. Involved in the community and planning process for both the development and its infrastructure can lead to better outcomes and foster a sense of ownership and pride among residents. Last one, I know it was long. Long-term viability. Infrastructure is the backbone of our, any community and without solid foundation, a new development may struggle to meet the demands of its residents and business in the long term. Last thing, in summary. Building new developments, new development, without proper first establishing the necessary infrastructure can lead to various problems in terms of sustainability, safety, economic efficiency and community well-being. Proper planning and patience is, is in waiting for infrastructure to be in place before development starts can help create thriving, successful communities for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the help people we had sign up, so I'm glad the public hearing's been held as popular council, Mr. President.
Mr. President, couple things, um, and I heard Mr. Bostick talk about, Mayor, when you were at the, uh, Brighton Estates Homeowners Association meeting the other night, this was the, um, project we were talking about that was coming on Bell Road. And south of Bell Road, they're gonna four-lane it from about Norris Farms across Vaughn Road, Charlie, going into your side, they're gonna try to alleviate some traffic, but it does absolutely nothing for the south end of Bell Road. There's a five-A school that is coming, um, we're talking about, Mr. Miles talked about the car wash that is gonna be dumped on the Bell Road, talking about the gas station that's gonna be dumped on the Bell Road. If you guys remember, the development on Vaughn Road that we passed a while back, four hundred homes, we fought like the devil to keep them all out of, uh, Bell Station, Norris Farms and Billingsley Place because Bell Road is so bad. So what I'd like to see the city do and Councilman Calhoun and Charlie is put this thing on NPO for long planning and see what we can do with Bell Road, it's gotta have some infrastructure. So, like Mr. Miles said, I don't think anybody's against residential, I'm not and I don't think anybody is, but just this project continues to dump traffic.
The road needs work.
And it's, and it's dangerous, it's dangerous.
It is.
So with those reasons, Mr. President, I wanna vote or make a motion that we carry this over indefinitely, please.
Can I, uh, can I speak in to reply to the comment that was made a moment ago by the other gentleman?
Yes, sir, come here. Just quick.
Uh, there were a few comments that I would like to address real quick, uh, from the gentleman that just spoke. Uh, first of all, the comment was made that water and sewer infrastructure were not in place, water and sewer infrastructure are in place, there is sewer. If you go back to slide number three, I believe it is, uh, or excuse me, slide number two, you will see on the back of our lot, there is existing sanitary sewer right there that we are intended to tie to and there is also water available at the road, that, uh, Waterworks has already confirmed that water and sewer is available for this. Traffic is the only infrastructure we're worried about. Again, right there on Vaughn Road, or excuse me, on Bell Road heading north, there is a two-lane road going north and there will be a two-lane road going south. That is as safe as you can ask. Uh, as far as the comment that, uh, Bell Road is not four lanes all the way up, I was not saying that Bell Road- that Bell Road is four lanes all the way up from here, I'm saying at all of the major subdivisions to the north, there are sections of Bell Road that was expanded to four lanes, and at those points, ours has the same setup as all of those other subdivisions and is just as safe as they are. As far as delaying on the development until the infrastructure catches up, if you delay the development because of infrastructure, this developer doesn't get to build. You have just killed their project because they're purchasing this property, she, her purchasing the property is set on this being rezoned, and you have just given her a unfair judgment and handed it down the road for someone else to profit when the city finally gets around to expanding it. You're taking away her opportunity, and that's not fair based on infrastructure alone, if that's the only valid complaint. The other point is that we did meet with the community twice. It was pointed out that having met with the community and worked with the community to try to come up with something, I know what they're referring to. We met with the community twice, but like I said, we're not a large developer that has, is building a four-hundred-lot subdivision that can go ahead and tell you what their covenant's going to be, what the rules, the homeowners association's going to be, what size house they're going to put in each section of their major subdivision. This is a small community development that is at the very beginning process, so expecting that we will be able to answer every question of everything that's going to happen, it's just too early.
Okay, thank you for your input. Okay. Mr. President?
Mr. President, I'm going to make a motion real quick, and he was right, we did have two meetings. Councilman Mitchell was there, both of them, we had great turnouts at both meetings, and you know, and I heard him say that, you know, this is unfair and unjust that it, to kill this, this lady's project. Well, what I think is unfair is to the people that live around that community that we're forgetting about, the folks in Brighton Estates, the folks in Bell Station, the folks in Norris Farms, Fairfield, to put undue burden on them continually without the city fixing the infrastructure and the roads for that area. So, you know, again, it's not a right to do business in the city, it's a privilege, and for us to infringe on the homeowners that are here now, I just don't think that's very fair. So that's why I want to make a motion that we carry this over indefinitely.
Table indefinitely.
Table indefinitely, yes, ma'am.
Have a motion on the floor, all in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Okay. Next item?
Item two, hearing on proposed ordinance rezoning one lot located on the northeast corner of Taylor Road in Wenton Lot Loop from an O one district to a B two district.
Okay, we have nobody signed up for this one, this is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak on this item, please come forward. You hear for item two?
No, sir, I'm Harold Hale, I'm with the builder. I'm Harold Hale, I represent Web Builders, and we're the one to put forward the request for the zoning change.
On item number two?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is a public hearing, anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, public, anybody want to speak against this item, come forward. Seeing none, public hearing's been held, it's popular council, any motion? This is okay?
Mr. President, move to suspend.
And most, most, most adopt. All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, ordinance is adopted.
All right, item number three?
Hearing on proposed ordinance amending the text of the zoning ordinance, Article seven, Section four, M one, M two, M three, to add data center to Class A as a permitted use.
This is a public hearing, anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing's been held, popular council, any motion?
President, move to adopt.
And most adopt, all in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, ordinance is adopted. Number four, council, I put before you the certification of qualified candidates for the mayor and the council, these will be spread in the minutes for the records.
Okay.
Item five, resolution certifying only one candidate qualified for District One and declaring Ed Grimes elected to that office.
Yeah, motion to suspend rules?
I think you might want to do that.
Yeah, you want to do that?
Motion to suspend rules.
There you go, all in favor, raise your hand.
Nope.
Unanimous.
All right, you want to, you want a motion to approve it, too?
Motion to adopt.
Approve.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item six, resolution certifying only one candidate qualified for District Six and declaring Arunde K. Mitchell elected to take office.
Discussion. Discussion. Motion to suspend rules.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Congratulations, Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Grant.
Thank you very much.
Item number seven, resolution authorizing increase in pay for poll workers to coincide with state and county elections.
Okay, any more to suspend rules?
Mr. President, move to suspend the rules.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Now, you got one more thing?
Mr. President, I got one that I passed out before the council.
Council, this is an application for a lounge retail liquor Class Two license doing business as Payless Tobacco in Bell Ridge at twenty-seven seventeen Eastern Boulevard.
Representative for Payless Tobacco here? Yes, sir. Your name for the record, please?
Chris Raymer.
Okay, Chris, this is a public hearing, anyone like to speak against this item, please go forward. Seeing none, public hearing's been held, it's popular council, any motion?
Mr. President, move to suspend the rules.
And most suspend rules, all in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Okay, good luck with business, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone have anything else to bring up this afternoon?
No, we're good.
Anybody good? All right, meeting adjourned.